...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Hope everybody had a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Yes.
If that's not politically correct, I don't care.
Merry Christmas to you guys.
I'm taking you to court.
Good. We can go right upstairs now.
Can we take a number?
All right, item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 12th meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve the minutes of the December 12th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item two.
Make a motion to recess commissioner's meeting and open salary board at still nine o'clock.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve the minutes of the December 12th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried.
Good morning.
Salary board, we are here. Item number one.
I'll make a motion and approve the minutes of the November 14th salary board meeting. Do we have it?
Do we have it?
Do we have those minutes?
Not attached.
I think he was away.
Oh, that's right, he was away. All right, so we have a motion.
About seven minutes.
And a second, question by Commissioner Arnold, send my question Warren, approve the minutes of November 14th, 2018. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item list, okay, item number two.
At this time, I'd make a motion to create a temporary part-time task force, DARE instructor, position effective January 21st through April 15th, 2019, at an hourly rate of $15 an hour, no benefits.
I'll second that.
Motion by District Attorney Marion O'Malley, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to create the temporary part-time task force, DARE instructor. Any questions or comments?
Can you explain what DARE is?
DARE is a program that's in all but one of the county schools, and it's a program intended to help teach fifth graders to make wise decisions, including those involved with drugs, alcohol, bullying, and various social issues that will arise for them.
And when you say no benefits, that means they don't even get medical?
No.
So they have to go out and get their own medical?
Yep.
And how many of your employees are in that category?
I would say probably fifteen or twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And thank you.
Thank you.
District Attorney O'Malley for having that program and doing such a great job with it, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve item number three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item three on the agenda, to create the full-time, non-union position of deputy planning director, GIS supervisor, technician, with salary of $44,000. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number four.
Make a motion to approve a 2% increase for 2019, I'd like that added, please.
I'll second that with the change.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item four, to approve a 2% increase for the year 2019, for the non-union eligible employees in categories of confidential supervisory managerial. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any public comment on the salary board?
Make a motion to close the salary board at nine oh four and return to the commissioners.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve the following cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Thank you, Mr. President. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve item number three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve the following cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item four, ratify or put following seminar requests or payments for seminar requests. Questions or comments? Yes.
And what is, what is the seminar for? What are they learning? What is this basics? What does that mean?
It's basic department of corrections.
And these are what corrections people?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item five, reappoint Paul Lucas of Forest City as the Director of Suscano County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term. Questions or comments?
Is there a salary for that?
No, it's volunteer.
It's volunteer.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item six on the agenda for the transfer of James Kane from the full-time, non-union position of GIS coordinator to the full-time, non-union position of deputy planning director, GIS supervisor technician. Questions or comments?
So those are like two positions? When you say deputy planning, is that?
It's one combined position.
But he's working with the Planning Commission also besides?
Right, GIS is falling under the Planning Commission.
And GIS is what exactly? Some kind of mapping thing?
Just the mapping for the county. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, to acknowledge the hiring of Susan Cuntz of Montrose to the open union eligible temporary position of part-time file clerk for the recommendation of Margaret Kropinski, clerk of courts with honor. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item eight on the agenda, acknowledge the hiring of Heidi Seison, a Friendsville, the open union eligible temporary position of part-time file clerk for the recommendation of Margaret Kropinski, clerk of courts with honor. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Number nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item nine on the agenda, approve the hiring of April Tribal Shop in PA to the union, non-union, full-time position of information technology technician. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item ten.
Make a motion to approve item number ten as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 10 on the agenda, and to acknowledge the hiring of Paul Burnett of Johnson City, New York, to the open temporary part-time position of task force, DARE instructor, effective January 21st, 2019. Questions or comments?
Do you have an instructor right now that he's replacing?
Yes. No, not replacing anybody, it's just an additional person to help with the DARE program.
And when you say part-time, is there a certain amount of minimum hours he's going to get, or?
That'll be up to the district attorney, that's the number of hours, they can't go over the part-time hours that are, that require to stay under the part-time number.
What's the part-time hours now?
I think it's under 28 hours.
And what kind of requirements do you need to?
You'd have to check with the district attorney on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Number 11.
Make a motion to approve item number 11 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item number 11, except with regret, a lot of regret, through the designation of Sarah Rae Seison from the position of Director of Order Registration, effective January 26th. Questions or comments?
And do you have a replacement for her?
Not yet.
I was just going to ask if you could elaborate as to why she's leaving?
New opportunity in a field that she wants to be in.
It's a shame to lose her.
It's a big shame to lose her. But it more correlates with what she wants to do in life, so with that, we would support her and wish her well.
So she's leaving the courthouse then?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 12.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item 12, to transfer $36,633.54 from the Marcellus Legacy Fund to the General Fund for Agricultural Land Preservation. Questions or comments?
And what is that fund like? Marcellus Legacy, I mean, where do they get its money from?
That comes out of the Act 13.
And why was it like a separate fund? What was the purpose?
You'd have to talk to legislators in Harrisburg, they're the ones that set that up. That's out of that 60% they keep in Harrisburg.
So you're transferring that to agricultural land preservation?
Yep.
Which is to promote agricultural land?
No, it's to promote keeping the farmland intact and stop it from being gobbled up and subdivided and commercialized.
And how do you do that?
It's a program through the Conservation District, you could go talk to the Conservation District and they could fill you in.
And she might know about it, Marion, she's like the conservation lady. How do they, how do they use those funds? How do people apply for that?
The funds are used, you apply, I think that it's open, the application process is open right now. I think it opened November 15th, and I can't remember when it ends, but I think it's open for like 90 days. You apply, and then your farm is graded, and you get points for eligibility, and if there happens to be a farm that's already in ag preservation, that joins your farm, and you're putting those acres in, your points go up because of the
Continuation.
Continuous parcel being in ag preservation, or your soils, if you have great soils, things like that. So we usually only get to put one farm in per year, sometimes one, and some extra acres from another farm.
And then what do you give, I mean, what kind of money do you give to people? For what purpose?
I can't remember what the exact amount is, you get so much per acre. In Susquehanna County, it's much less than what you would get in Bucks or Lancaster or somewhere like that, per acre. Your property is actually put into farmland preservation for perpetuity.
So do you get money every year?
No, you get a one-time. And sometimes people can pay off their farm, pay off the mortgage, and then it's theirs. You know, they use it for that, they use it for equipment, they use it for things that they otherwise would not have been able to.
So it's only so much per acre, so?
Yes, and I can't remember the amount exactly, I'm sorry.
So that you're trying to preserve those farms, and what if they have gas drilling on their farms? Are they eligible?
Yes.
Except for the acres.
Not, not on, not on surface, that part is not.
That those, that acreage that's being used is not?
Yes, but if they have subsurface on leases, it is.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Item 13.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 13 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item 13 on the agenda, to approve the purchase of security camera system installed to the Suscano County Maintenance Building from True View. Questions or comments?
I have a question, where the money's coming from?
This money should come out of, Marty, let's make sure we use this, out of the grant money that's available.
Which grant money? Is there a designation for that grant money?
It's either going to be P-Corp or P-Corp, there's $10,000 from each one.
And is this maintenance building the one that's in South Montrose?
Yes.
That's just been built?
Yes.
Is that open now? Is it being used?
Nope, we have probably about another, I'd say probably another three weeks before it'll be finished, and they can be on it.
And that'll be your maintenance building?
Yes.
It's on how much acreage? What are you using over there?
It's less than an acre that we've got the building on, so.
So it's county, all that thing, the whole section is county-owned?
All that down there is county-owned behind the Bowden Alley. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 14 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item 14 on the agenda, approve signing resolution 2018-19, authorizing securing title insurance for the new public safety building in New Milford Township with an approved value of approximately $15 million. Questions or comments?
What, what is the public safety building in New Milford? Where is it?
Well, we've been talking about it now for a year, it's behind the State Police barracks in Gibson.
Behind the state police?
Current state police barracks. It's 15 acres of land, which will house the public, all the public safety, plus the coroner and district magistrate.
So 911 is going to be there?
Yes.
District magistrate and also the coroner.
Yep.
So when you say title insurance is needed for 15, it's worth 15 million, the whole thing, that comment?
No, what it is, title insurance protects us in case there's a title issue with the property. We expect that the improvements to the property will be of a value of 15 million or less. That way, if there is an issue, and the taxpayers are not out, we have insurance to cover us.
And what does insurance cost for something like that?
It's minimal. I can't tell you the exact number.
You mean thousands?
It's probably going to be a couple thousand dollars.
Per year? Or just for that one payment?
No, it's a one-time deal.
And that property, 15 acres, is county-owned? Did you recently?
It will be county-owned after we get this done.
Oh, so it's not county-owned yet?
Not yet. We have to do the title search first and insure the title.
Can you say who the owner is?
I'm not sure the name of the company, it's the same group that owns the Holiday Inn Express in.
So it's some kind of a corporation?
It's Sin Realty.
How do you spell that?
I think it's S-I-N.
G-H.
G-H.
Sin Realty.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 15.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve item 15 on the agenda, then our purchase service agreement between Suscano County Services for children and youth, and Jennifer Yarnell, MCAT, PhD, licensed psychologist, in Stillwater PA, for psychological evaluations. Questions or comments?
What does that mean, $500 per visit per child? What is that?
It's, I believe that is for, for the evaluation itself. Then there's $50 for intervention, for the Minnesota multi-faceted personality intervention, and then there's mileage and travel at .545 per mile.
So does that mean, I still understand that, does that mean per child, or?
Yeah.
So if you have five children here, it's 500 times five.
That's correct.
And she comes and visits, how often?
I think she doesn't come here, we go there.
Oh, the child?
Or she, I'm sorry, no, she does come here, and we pay for mileage to come here.
And Stillwater, how far is that from here?
I'm not sure. It's a ways.
It's a ways, right?
Yep.
You can't find it closer, like psychologists even here?
No, this is the one that's been approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 16 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, send my question on, approve 16, to open and reward the following review of the solicitor, sealed bids for general excavating regarding bridge maintenance, bridge repair, bridge restoration, dam maintenance, dam repair, and dam restoration, and other general county-related projects as determined. Go ahead and open them.
All in favor? Aye.
All right.
Who's your present excavator? Do you have one now?
Ken Row.
So he doesn't want to keep doing it?
He has to bid it all, you just can't have him just do it forever, it has to go up and bid. We have one from Agwan Farms, and we have one from Ken Row Excavating. They'll both go to the solicitor and chief clerk for review, and we will announce at the next meeting as to who got awarded the bid. Item 17, just a note there, refuse service bid was awarded to Joe's disposal service in Halsted, PA. Bid is on file, that was actually reviewed by the solicitor and the chief clerk. Okay, with that.
Can I have a comment about that?
Sure.
I'd like to know, once, is Joe going to go to Diaz's day, is Diaz's transfer station open yet?
No, it's not even built yet.
I see some kind of a building there. Nothing at all, but it's not, it's not done yet.
Not done yet.
Do they have a completion date? It's been taking a long time since then.
I'm sorry, what?
It's been taking a long time.
I have no idea, you'd have to talk to Mr. Diaz on that.
So you haven't heard anything like?
No.
What's completion date, or?
Nothing.
So all these, like refuse companies are going straight to Scranton then?
They haven't been for the last 20 years.
All right, so there's no, nothing with Diaz yet?
Nope. Any other public comment? Yes.
I'd like to know, let's see, what can we do about zoning? I went to the zoning meeting last, last Tuesday. Is there any way, can any company come into this county, any business, as long as they meet the land ordinances and the noise regulations, noise studies, can anybody just come in here?
Well, I don't know if you can say just anybody can come in here, it depends on what the municipalities ordinances are that they have and what they allow.
But aren't most of the municipalities pretty simple, their ordinances, let's say Bridgewater, or Dimick, or?
Well, you'd have to talk to those municipalities and talk to them about that.
Is there any way that the county can have more zoning, so that we don't have companies in here that are polluting our air, our water, our land, and that don't have violations and fines?
Well, zoning doesn't, doesn't restrict people from coming in. The only thing zoning does is determine where these businesses are going to be. You can't stop a business from coming in, you still have to, even with zoning, you have to have commercial spots, industrial spots, residential spots, you still have to have all those, those things.
Well, can't we have some kind of zoning which says it can't be near homes, next to homes, it has to be in some kind of a spot that's designated as an industrial zone like other areas in, in our country?
Well, yes, and there are some municipalities in this county that have zoning and do do that.
So mention one. Who's doing that right now?
Oh, well, the Milford Borough has zoning, Susquehanna Borough has zoning, there's six or eight of them, I believe, that have it.
Any townships besides?
I believe there are one.
Haratt?
Haratt is one, isn't it? Or Herrick Township? Herrick Township is one.
Haratt Township?
Yeah.
So we can't somehow keep them out if they have a bad record, bad safety record or bad pollution record?
Well, I'm not saying you can't do something, I mean, it depends on what the infraction is, and then it would be a matter of going to the state agencies that control that, whether it's DEP or whoever it is, and talk to them.
Well, DEP basically allows them to continue, just like we have over 1,000 DEP violations right now with the gas industry. Cabot has almost 700 violations, they're still allowed to operate.
And I would suggest you talk to your state legislators and talk to the state.
And then any news that you can give us about the new company in Springville and Phillips Road with their trucks? Because I've noticed that their trucks don't have NG Advantage on them, so maybe people don't notice which trucks they are, but they have Maropito on their cabs, they have Turpentine on their cabs, and GTM or GMT on their cabs. So they have three different cabs that there's, they're on our roads right now since last week. So any, any feedback from you, or any of the super commissioners here about this company that's here that's adding all these trucks on our roads and pounding the roads, 29 is going to be a mess in a short time. And they're going up South, 29 South, 29 North into New York.
I don't have any additional information from the last time that we discussed it. I'm not sure exactly how many, you know, how many people are employing, or how many trucks there are, I do not have that information.
So you don't know even, let's say, if they're employing any of our county, because we're trying to encourage, I thought, from the comprehensive plan even, encourage local people to be employed. How many people are being employed locally from this company? Do you know, can you inquire as a commissioner?
Well, the last information I had heard is they're, they right now have 15 local people working there.
Because when I saw that where their trucks go in New York, in Endicott, New York, where their, their drop yard is, they're using companies in New York to drive their trucks. So they probably have New York drivers driving their trucks.
Well, I don't know if you realize, right now there's about 150 CDL jobs available in this county that aren't filled. So we don't have people to fill the jobs. I do know that Elk Lake School is working on a program to train and get people CDL licenses. So I know they're working on that right now, with some help from, funding from the governor's office to do that.
And what can you tell us about the poverty level in our county? Has that poverty level gotten any better since 10 years ago when the gas industry came in here? Because I read recently in The Independent, 55% of the children in Elk Lake Elementary Schools are at the poverty level.
Mm-hmm.
So that to me sounds higher than what we had 10 years ago.
I don't think that's a true statement, I think you'll have to wait for the next census to come out to find out what it says.
Well, they're saying 55%, where are they getting that number?
I have no idea, you'd have to ask them where they're getting it from.
So you don't think it might be accurate, or what?
I didn't say that, I just said I don't know where they're getting it from, and I don't know that the number is worse or better until we get another census done and we can see what the census is.
Well, any of the commissioners on the board now, do you think our poverty levels have gone down to any kind of significant amount, or any kind of measurable amounts the past 10 years?
Do I think it's reduced by any significant amounts? No.
And does it seem about the same to you, or?
Well, I, I'm, you know, listen, I think it's probably within the same 10-point range.
Right, so with all the gas drilling, the promised, you know, wealth to the community, it hasn't done that, except for maybe a small percentage of very large landowners.
Well, I don't know if that's a true statement either, like I said, there's, right now, 125 to 150 CDL jobs available that pay 70 to $100,000 a year.
And who's offering those jobs? What companies? Can you?
Well, I know that Diaz is looking for drivers, I know that GDS is looking for drivers, I know that the one on 706 going down the hill, they got signs up looking for drivers. I mean, anywhere that has trucks is looking for drivers.
Well, the conditions are not that good, when I talk to the drivers that I know, the young men, they're working 12-hour days, and they're working six days a week, it's very hard work, and they're getting about $22 an hour, so how do you get 70,000 out of that? Let's say they work?
Well, again, I don't know who you're talking to.
I'm talking to the drivers.
Well, again, I don't know who you're talking to, but I know that Pendot pays eighteen dollars an hour on a temporary position with no benefits, I know Mr. Diaz is paying over twenty dollars an hour with full benefits, and if you showed up all month, he would give you a bonus if you made it to work all month, and I know that GDS was, had on theirs, it was twenty-three dollars an hour, or twenty-four with full benefits and everything else.
XNG is always looking for drivers, the compressed gas company in Forest Lake, and we're, they're near the New York border, so they can get New York workers, so they're always looking for drivers, and I've talked to drivers there, and they don't like the conditions or the company, they have complaints, so they have a massive turnover, besides drivers, also managers. So if these companies are not really the best companies for people, we need to have better companies that have better conditions for their, for their employees, so that they wanna stick around, that they wanna stay.
Okay, well, I just mentioned a couple people that just have great benefits and are great companies, Diaz is one of them.
GDS is not, I've had complaints from drivers that I know of at GDS, XNG is not, complaints from people with XNG.
Well, listen, I understand what you're saying, and I do know from experience that not everybody is cut out to be a driver and can stand to drive for ten hours a day.
Twelve.
No, no, the CDL law says that you can only drive for ten hours a day, sixty hours a week, so, you know, I don't know who's telling you what, but obviously, people are embellishing a little bit, but, you know, there's always people that are driving for companies, they don't like the hours, they don't like the days, they don't like working nights, listen, if that's the job you chose, it's the job you chose, if you don't like your job, you should get out and go find another one.
I guess they could be a commissioner, that might not be as?
Well, there you go, you know? Or they could be somebody here in the audience heckling the commissioners, right? Anybody else got anything else?
I just, I just want to comment about Susquehanna County Resource Day, we've begun working on that, and it's going to be Family Day and Resource Day, or Community Day, whatever, we haven't really come up with a name yet, but it will be at Mountain View School on Saturday, March twenty-third, from nine AM until one PM, just as last year's event was, and we're encouraging different resources in the county to come, we're also working on an app for Susquehanna County that will have those resources, plus a whole bunch of other things, including a calendar of events happening in the county, and we hope to be able to have that out by the beginning of March, at least by Resource Day, that that is released, it'll be a free app that county residents will be able to download and have at their fingertips on their smartphones, so we're looking forward to releasing that also. Thank you.
Thank you, I was gonna ask too about the Planning Commission, we have an opening on that board, because Ted Place designed, so how do you choose somebody? I hear there's three names that have come forward, three people have come forward, who are interested in the position, so how do you choose it? And who, do you choose it, all three have to agree on it, how do you choose somebody?
Well, you should know that majority rule, so it takes two of us to agree to anything, those have to be unanimous, and basically what happens is the Planning Commission will talk to the individuals, and they'll communicate to us, and then a decision will get made as to who sits on it.
So what do you base your decision on? Besides, what, like what, what are your credentials for these people?
Well, again, it'll be, be looking at people that have the time to do it, their expertise that they bring to the table, their knowledge, their, what they've done in their careers, to see how that matches in with what we're doing.
And the comprehensive plan that was recently updated, how does it help us, any of us who are concerned about our environment, who are concerned about the pollution in this county from all this industry that's coming in, how is it helping? What is that comprehensive plan doing for us?
Well, the comprehensive plan kinda lays out the direction that we're moving in in the county.
And, and, and what is the direction we're moving in?
Well, I think you need to read the copy of the comprehensive plan, and then you'll be able to take and get the information.
Why don't you just tell people, so?
Well, the comprehensive plan is that thick.
One hundred and thirty-nine pages, right?
That's right.
Can't you give like a couple pointers, like are you, are you encouraging the industry to keep coming in, the gas industry?
Well, we encourage, you know, the comprehensive plan, as it's set forth, and I'm sure you know, because I believe you have looked at it, it says that, you know, the goals of the, of the constituents are, is to have jobs, protect the environment, try to keep kids here, so they don't have to leave the area, so it's a balance of all of that. Elizabeth, you had something you wanted to say?
Just wanted to make a motion to close the?
Any, any thoughts from Elizabeth about what you're doing this week, or past week, or past month, or anything to tell us?
It's been a busy two thousand and eighteen, I'm glad the year's over, looking forward to two thousand and nineteen with faith and optimism, yeah, we've covered a lot of ground.
Could I comment about the comprehensive plan? Wasn't there a public hearing that was held, and no one from the public showed?
Yes, because we didn't know about it, and none of us read, if I knew it was on, I would have been there, and I would have had a question there.
Okay, listen, we're not gonna go there, we have been talking.
We need to have better advertising.
Very, we have been talking about the couch, we have comprehensive plan for over a year, so.
I made comments for it, I sent in my?
That's right, and so you did make your comments and they got sent in, people were sent postcards, all the supervisors were contacted, all municipalities were contacted, it was advertised in the paper, so.
There's a reason why people income, it's not because there's lack of interest, so you don't have to put us in that category, we do have interest, there's people, and we didn't know, I didn't know, others didn't know, we would have been there, those who are more active.
Then, I don't know why you didn't know, it was advertised, it was in the paper, it was all of it.
We don't always read those great county papers and look at the little?
Well, listen, it's not my fault you don't read the paper.
Well, we don't read all of it.
And I'm not gonna send you a special invitation to your house to ask you to come. Well, it's not happening, that's a waste of taxpayers' dollars.
So when we get the new app up and running, we can put that type of thing on there?
Right, and why wasn't it, yeah, it could be on that, plus on the Facebook, how about Facebook for the county?
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I think Elizabeth made it and I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Word, Jen.